Virtual council meeting. I appreciate everybody taking the time to be here and those who may be watching online as well. So on our agenda today, we're going to call our meeting to order. We don't have any regrets. On the agenda, there's the invitation to stand and move. If you need to move around, you move around. Number three, we have the approval of the agenda. Is everybody okay with the agenda as it is presented? Can we have somebody make a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Glenn by Counselor Diggden, seconded by Counselor Saret. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Uh, any conflict of interest declarations for any of the items on the agenda today? Okay, seeing none, we will carry on. If you have a conflict of interest to declare, you can do so when the item comes up on the agenda as well. Number four, seven day notice. We don't have anything for seven day notice today. Number five is the meat and potatoes of our agenda today. It's for decision and discussion. So we have four items on there today that we we um, we need to get tidied up. It's something that we have to get done. So I appreciate everybody taking the time. So the first one is the ice pad replacement at Mariners Center. So this is an item we've already discussed. We do have an attachment that describes the fact that the ice surface, uh, the ice pad has to be replaced on at Arena One and being owners of that. The request has come forward that we help uh, support that we, we help pay for this replacement. The uh, projected cost of that would be $2 million. And we're looking for all three municipal units. They're looking for all three municipal units to, to pay uh, for that ice replacement. The work would happen in the spring, spring, summer of next year of 2026. Note that we have, and the request came from Daniel Muse, who is the Chair of the Mariners Center Management Authority. Know that at our meeting, um, at their meeting this week, we also had a a letter that one of the other units that Modi has already in principle supported this request. So any questions or comments from council? Either raise your hand or raise your virtual hand. But if not, we're looking for a motion. Yes, Counselor Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I have just a quick question or maybe two if Kyle is listening in. I know the pipes are leaking under the cement, if I understand correctly. That's the problem. Is the same situation happening in both arenas? It, it seems to me that I know that they are at end of life. It seems to me 25 years is not a very long time. And I wonder if uh, maybe Kyle could speak to that or maybe on that.
Any insight Kyle or Alaa?
Yeah, from my knowledge, Arena Two is still fine. So the Arena One, uh, I believe ended its life a little bit early. So this problem started, I believe, first time they added uh, more refrigerant uh, was 2018. So this actually started quite a while ago. I do not believe that Arena Two is in jeopardy of being an end of life anytime soon. I don't believe they've earned any problems with that.
That answer your question?
Thank you Kyle.
Okay.
And I guess, oh, I'm sorry. I guess I was wondering how does this end of life situation compare to end of life piping in other arenas such as? It's hard to compare because I don't know if there are other arenas that were built around the same time as the Mariners Center. Some of them may be much older, others may be much newer. But I'm surprised that uh, the pipes have already uh, used up their useful life since about 2018, I guess.
Yeah, so um, I know Coal Harbor Place did theirs. Um, pre-COVID, uh, I don't know what year exactly, but it was right around there and I'm not sure the year built, but that arena would be much older. So their first replacement was uh, 2017, 2018 area. So I think this is very quick end of life for this type of system. It's unfortunate, but uh, I think it's just something that failed well beyond uh, well earlier than anybody could have anticipated.
Thank you Kyle.
Thank you. I saw Ted and then I see, uh, sorry. I see Deputy Warden Sonya and then I see Counselor Madden. Go ahead Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Kyle, I guess this is for you. I'm just wondering if there's any outside funding or is there going to be any application for any outside funding for this?
So it doesn't qualify for a ton of funding. I spoke to Darren Camo from Akoa. Doesn't qualify for anything with them. Um, I, we already applied for, there's one small uh, rent grant or arena grant uh, that we already applied for, we're not eligible for for two more years. I believe that's up to 75,000. Um, I did reach out to MLA Hilton about precisely that. Um, he said, you know, touch base at the end of budget. I talked to him again this week. There will be nothing available in this year's budget from the province. Um, we gotta be careful where we go with the province on this as they've donated a lot to, to the expansion. But I think we do keep in constant contact with them leading up to this time next year and kind of see if there's anything that they may be able to support us with.
Okay, thank you Kyle.
Thank you. Counselor Madden?
Uh, yeah Kyle, uh, is there any issues there now? Because the ice is being used. How do they know that there's a problem? What's the?
So they continue to fill up the system with fly call. Um, at one point it was quite excessive, I believe. Uh, I forget the exact amount, but it was like between like 50 and 80 liters a day they were adding to it. Um, they have added some sort of sealant that's supposed to go through the system and help rectify the leaks. That has helped considerably from my understanding, but they are still adding it to the system regularly. So they do know that there's a leak under there. Um, it's continuing to happen. It has slowed down as they've added some of this additive as kind of a Band-Aid solution. But it's definitely slowed down since the height of it. And I believe that, again, I believe the year was 2018 when it was max and they keep adding the solution to try to slow it down and, and keep it under control to keep ice in the building as long as possible.
Yeah, okay, because I, there every week and the ice is there, so I didn't realize.
It's there.
In, in my, in my, in my world of car repair, we would put radiator stop leak.
Well, I, I think that's essentially what it was, to be honest, Malcolm. It was very similar to that.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Uh, there is a proposed motion um, that we could make to support. Uh, I feel like we should support in principle, making sure that the other two units support as well. I know, we know one of them has, but I'm not sure about the other one. Motion to support in principle, the ice surface replacement project at Mariners Center. Do we feel comfortable making that motion?
So.
Moved by Counselor Madden. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Warden Sonya. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary minded, motion carried. Number two, intermunicipal agreement for the Yarmouth Airport Corporation. So this is one that's been in the works for a little bit of time. For, for quite a bit of time. So there is a, an intermunicipal agreement that was shared with, with you earlier. Um, I suspect you've had a chance to look it over. Some of the highlights, some of the things that I, that I noted is that uh, it, it would be our, our portion, which is 30.66 percent, 30.667 percent. The one thing I noted too, that it's paid out quarterly, so 35%, 35%, 15%, 15%. Um, we would be getting quarterly income statements. We should be getting an annual presentation to let us know how things are going. And this agreement should be coming into effect on April, well, should, once it's signed, April 1st, 2024 for 10 years. Am I missing anything CAO Muse that you feel like we should really discuss? I mean, we've kind of had conversations around this already. But I know that a lot of work went into it. I know that you've worked diligently on making sure that it's the right agreement for us. The airport is commonly a bone of contention for council and um, uh, we've had a lot of discussions around the airport. So I, I, I know that you have been um, instrumental in making sure that the agreement works for everybody, us included. But if you have something to add, feel free.
The only thing I would say is um, yes, it's a culmination of the negotiations between the three. I think that the airport has um, consistently been an issue for this council and other councils around why are we invested in this? And I think that very much the perspective from council and others have, have been around the safety around the around the airport. Um, and, and all of the things that we have invested in around the medical responsiveness and other things. So I don't want to get into detail of that, more so to say that this is one of the many things that we're invested in. And we want to be sure that we continue that safety side of things. There are many things that come out of that around provincial and or federal commitments to do, to the airport. But at the end of the day, I think that we want to make sure that we understand that this is an agreement between the three units. And if we go further than that, I think we should. And I think that it requires us to take another, take another level of um, commitment around that. I don't think that let me, let me try to make that clear. There are many issues that have been brought up in this council and other councils around uh, whether the municipal government needs to be associated with this or not. So um, in this period, we need to be focused on what the municipal commitment is. And if there are provincial or federal issues associated with that, that has nothing to do with this contract. We have seen uh, at the board level what the issues are. And many of them are federal, environmental, provincial, environmental. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, we need to be focused on uh, what the town and the municipality and the municipality of our gala are committed to do. And at the end of the day, we have an understanding that every day medical emergencies happen. And I think we have to focus on that issue and elevate the issue to other levels of government. This agreement certainly um, well, I think reflects what the three units have committed to do. So excuse me. I think that at the end of the day, we agree with that situation and then see what happens provincially or federally.
Is it uh, my understanding that the other two have signed this already? They've already approved this?
I didn't hear about the town, but I certainly heard about the municipality. Yeah, I agree. Excuse me. Excuse me. I agree that the town, the municipality has agreed to this, but I don't know. I had no information on the town at this time.
Okay. So in order to, in order to discuss this, there is a motion on the floor and the motion would be to, that we agree to approve this intermunicipal agreement, to sign this intermunicipal agreement. Can we have somebody make that motion? Okay, it's made by Counselor LeBlanc. Do we have a seconder of that motion? Seconded by Counselor Saret. Any questions or comments on that motion? Counselor Diggden, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, yeah, I guess it has been a bone of contention with me. There's no saying it hasn't. Uh, the airport is a very vital uh, piece of infrastructure, infrastructure in this area. Uh, it's used pretty well daily, uh, whether it's not by uh, um, the medical crews coming in to transport people to Halifax or take them back. A lot of search and rescue comes out of there. A lot of your Coast Guard and that use that airport. And I know Alaa said as far as elevating it to other levels of, of government. But I feel as though there's levels of government as we are, other municipalities and towns that a lot of their residents are being either flown in or flown out from that airport. And they pay zero. While you have three units here keeping that airport going. Uh, it's a regional uh, airport. It's a regional hospital uh, that we have here, which means that your sicker patients from anywhere is from Digby County to Shelburne County usually end up in Yarmouth Regional before they're uh, transported on to Halifax for more care. Um, and I just feel as though we should um, be getting something from those other uh, municipalities. I uh, we tried here a while ago. We've got very little response. Uh, when the warden wrote us back a letter from Claire stating as though he thought it was a provincial issue. When he made it into provincial politics, I questioned him about it. Well, I'm on the wrong side of government and that I guess I can't do much. We have the provincial uh, government saying, well, if the federal government would help out, we may help out. And then you talk to your federal members and they're saying, well, gee, if the provincial uh, crew would get into the government, we might be able to help out. It's kind of like we're going in circles. We're spending a lot, a lot, a lot of our taxpayers' money to keep that open for a whole lot of people that are paying zero dollars towards it. Uh, that's, you know, do I believe in the airport fully? Uh, do I think we're getting a uh, a fair shake and that I don't? Uh, that's just my, my piece. I know the, it, it is a, what, the only other thing too, I found that I was reading through the agreement. It's a 10-year agreement with the option of another five after that. And I just felt as though for other uh, councils that may be coming after us, I don't know if there's an option for them to, to get out of this agreement or to have other stuff added into this agreement. It just seems like it was a pretty closed agreement. So I, I know I know we have to have an agreement by all means. Uh, I hope it works. I hope it works for everyone involved. Yeah, but other than that, yes, I'm all for it by all means. And that I will definitely be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diggden. I had a similar thought too. 10-year agreement with the option to renew it in five years, for five more years. Um, in 10 years, we don't know who our CAO will be. In 10 years, we don't know who our counselors will be. Um, it's, I'm just hoping that whoever they are, they are on top of it, right? And they will make sure that it continues to be a, a, the best deal possible, I guess, for the municipality. Yeah. Go ahead. Sorry, Counselor, uh, Deputy Warden Sonya.
That's fine. Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, I agree with everything Glenn said. We have been agreeing in the past on this, especially with the uh, the neighboring municipalities and, you know, they may not believe that it's part of their responsibility. However, I'll just add this, that if they were on board, we would have a louder voice to appeal to the higher governments. And, and uh, so I, I, I'm not going to repeat everything Glenn said. I'm just going to say that I, that I do agree with everything that's being said here. And that uh, it's a shame that our neighboring municipalities do not, do not agree because they're getting that free service and so I'm just going to ramble on because again, I'm just repeating what Counselor uh, Diggden's been saying. But yeah, I, I, I'm all for the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc.
Perfect. Sorry about that guys. Trying to work off my phone here. Um, yeah, uh, as Chair of the Airport Commission, um, and new to it, um, I've probably to learn quite a bit in regards to what's been going on there and what is taking place. One of the things that I can mention, especially to, to all the counselors is that we are fully aware of um, with the other municipalities that receive benefit from this, but do not contribute to this. And it is something that I believe that we are going to be putting, I, I, some sort of game plan, I guess, together. Um, recently, as you all know, we, we have had a very in-depth squad analysis done. There was 35 different things that came out of it and we've just got finished rating those in regards to not as much as priority, but more uh, things in regards to putting a point system of things that can get done realistically. Um, you know, there's some, some factors in regards to costs, for example, that may, even though it could be a priority, costs could prohibit um, getting it done in a timely manner. So um, I, I, I think the board is dedicated to what needs to be done there or to try to get done. Um, there are a few other things that are coming about. And also when you look at just even outside of of, for search and rescue or for medical reasons. Um, we also have a very successful drone company that is developing drones out of that area. And if you look at um, the announcement that was just made in regards to military spending by the Canadian government. And one of the things they are going to be looking at is, is uh, drone research, um, which I think it actually sets the possibility of Yarmouth Airport becoming um, hopefully in conjunction with uh, maybe the Canadian military, but open up other doors for things that possibly could be done.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Okay, seeing none, are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Next, we have uh, Islands and District Fire Approval to Expense Fire Truck Loan. There are three atta-, there are three attachments. There was um, the previous request. We have the policy. And then we have the request for loan forgiveness that we're looking at today. So Islands, they came, I think it was in 2022 and they needed a truck. So they came to council asking for a loan for a truck for $40,000, which we agreed to. It was a forgivable loan. I'm trying to find the details here. But basically what we're looking at doing today is looking at forgiving the remainder of the loan. So the motion that we're looking at today is to move to forgive the remaining loan receivable from Islands and District Fire Department in fiscal 2024, 2025. CAO, you want to give a little bit more background on this one?
Sure. Sorry guys. I've been having a cockpit for a long time. Excuse me. Um, the um, this, the uh, the, the, the request is fairly clear. Um, at the end of the day, we're basically looking to uh, excuse me, is looking to uh, write off a couple of years worth of loan payment uh, to the Islands and District. So at the end of the day, we excuse me. We uh, approved a $40,000 loan for three years. And um, we're in year one. We've already paid the cash. So um, the Islands is all set with excuse me. It is all set with the loan. But at the end of the day, we, we see a couple of things. So first of all, we see that um, the uh, fiscal position is clear that we are looking at a couple of years worth of uh, of expenses that we may not um, anticipate. And there's going to be I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So there's a couple of years worth of um, fiscal responsibilities that we have to be aware of. Number one. Number two is uh, we've already uh, dispersed the cash. We've already just we've already dispersed the cash to the Islands and District. So it's a paper, it's a paper transaction at the end of the day. So um, we have a couple of years worth of loan that we would write off. So my, my, my recommendation to you is to is to immediately write off that loan. Just a couple of reasons why we want to do that. So the first, the first reason is that we have a couple of years worth of um, write-off still to come. And we've already paid the loan. So from our perspective, it's, we want to move away from the uh, the perspect, the policy of uh, fire capital services review. Uh, we want to be able to be in a position where we can look forward and say, okay, for the nine uh, municipal, excuse me, the municipal fire departments, we want to be in a situation where we can make a long-term plan for them as opposed to having an individual plan for um, so, sorry, for um, individual fire departments. So our, our policy right now is very clear about helping individual policy, individual uh, fire departments, but it's not a long-term view. So we want to be in a situation where if we can write off, if we can write off things that um, don't negatively, negatively impact the fire departments, that don't negatively impact the municipality, that we should do that now. And so we can move forward into implementing a new fire uh, capital service policy. I'm sorry guys.
That's okay. So we, we'll try to get this motion on the floor before, so that we can discuss it. Is somebody willing to make the motion that we forgive the remaining loan receivable from Islands and District Fire Department fiscal 2024, 2025? Okay, Counselor Bork, seconded by Counselor Saret. Are there any questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded, motion carried. Thank you. And yes, go ahead.
There was a delay with my hand and my finger, I guess, on the button. Uh, just wondering, what is the fire rate down there at Islands and District? I believe it is. If we know.
Um, um, just off the cuff, it's uh, seven cents. Might have to look at it to be sure, but it's seven cents for sure.
That's, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I hadn't, I had missed that. All right, the last one for today is our solid waste collection. So this is another um, contract that we've been talking about. This is, it's imperative that we um, it has to be filled or else we have no garbage collection. Uh, we do have an RFD that was presented. It was a little bit late and we apologize for that. But basically, uh, it went out for tender, garbage collection went out for tender. One company, um, one company responded for the, uh, for waste collection services. So uh, regroup Royal Environmental Services Incorporated. The contract would be from April 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2032. It's about a 4% increase. And from hearing the horror stories from other municipalities, although 4% doesn't sound wonderful, it's still not as bad as some other municipalities were hit with. Um, some of the increases, so for our services, basically this, we're paying 400 and 400,500, it's going to increase to about 683,246. Spring and fall cleanup. Um, if we agree to do both, which there's an option there, but I think Um, if we agree to do both, which there's an option there, but I think, I think it would be tough to take away services at this point. Um, it would go from one ninety twenty-six per metric ton to the new rate of three seventy-five. Something these.
Um, Madam Chair, I have a couple of quick questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
That seems like more than four percent to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Kyle, go ahead.
So the four percent is the year-over-year cost increase once this contract's im- implemented. So the actual increase is is actually closer to seven seventy percent from last year's contract, which is in line with what most municipalities are seeing. Our previous contract had three percent rise year-over-year from the start to the end. This one showing a four percent increase. So the initial increase is much higher than four percent, but from year one
Year to year.
To to year seven, it's it's four percent per year.
Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
Yes.
My second question, this company, uh, it seems to me like they're not the company that's operating in our municipality now. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
So okay, go ahead.
So the collection group would be the same. I don't know the details there, but the collection group would be the same.
Okay, because my next question would have been, uh, does this company operate in other municipal units in Nova Scotia? And do we know if those municipalities are satisfied with the surface, with the service?
Yes, so we did receive references of the three most recent. I believe they operate in more than three. But we do have the reference for the three most recent, and I believe everybody is satisfied with their service.
Thank you, Kyle.
So we have a possibility of a couple of of of, we have a couple of options. So we can basically, I mean, we we don't really have, we have to approve we have to approve the company, but the option is, do we continue on basically with the services that we have at the moment, which is the first rotation or the second re- second recommendation is that we approve the acceptance of Regroup's offer for the provision of organic and waste collection, recycling collection, and either spring or fall cleanup services. So at the moment, we do both. We have a spring cleanup, we have a fall cleanup. But the 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 numbers show that we have the option to have just a spring or a fall. So what is the wish of council on this one? Do we want to keep status quo? Go ahead, Counsel Bork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I want the, uh, my question is if the the spring cleanup, I'm sure that one there is is a a major important one, but the fall cleanup la- from the previous years, do we know if we have a lot of garbage that's being picked up? Is it worth for them coming out to pick it up or is it less or? I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Because I know around home, there's a lot of garbage that goes out both times.
Yeah, here too.
I don't have that breakdown in front of me, to be totally honest. Um, all I have is the yearly total from last year. I don't have the breakdown of which was spring and which was fall.
Thank you. Counsel Madden?
So it's my understanding it's per weight, Kyle? So if we only have the one pickup, we're going to have a lot more garbage and the weight's going to be the same. So two pickups not going to cost us a whole lot more, i- in my opinion.
Yeah.
I would agree, you won't be cutting fifty percent just by cutting one.
Yeah, right.
You'd still see a majority of that.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing that we want to basically keep things the way that they are. So if that is the case, I I will read the motion and then we'll allow somebody to make the motion, but it is that council approves the acceptance of Regroup's offer for the of organics, waste collection, recycling, collection, and both spring and fall cleanup services in line with the existing service levels. Somebody uh moved by Counsel Bork, seconder, seconded by Counsel Budrow. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Contrary minded, motion carried. Okay, so next, there's no in camera, so can we have somebody move to adjourn? Thanks. Thank you, Counsel Diggden, seconded by Counsel LeBlanc, and I'm pretty sure we're all in favor.